I'm John Wensky, Vice Chair of the Shrewsbury School Committee. And welcome to our meeting for Wednesday, July 29th, 2020. Tonight's virtual meeting is being broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329 and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connections website. Thank you to SMC Executive Director Mark Sarah and SPS IT Manager Brian LaRue for supporting these meetings. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast between now and our next scheduled meeting for Wednesday, August 5th. We do offer public participation during our virtual meetings, although no one is scheduled to present today. I encourage the public to contact the school committee if you would like to speak about a specific school-related topic. Please email us in advance of our next meeting on August 5th. Our email address is schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.m a.us. First item on the agenda is Chairperson and Members' Reports. Colleagues, anything to report? Dale?
So immediately before this meeting, I infused three chocolate chip cookies from Shrewsbury Smart Cookies. Shrewsbury Smart Cookies is a fundraiser that is being run by the students. And they're very good. I leave it to you to decide whether they worked or not. But if you'd like to order some, they're available at shrewsburysmartcookies@gmail.com.
Great. Thank you, Dr. McGee. Any other reports, colleagues? Just on my end, I just want to thank everybody who organized the graduation part two up at the Shrewsbury High School Field last Saturday. I had the pleasure of attending and speaking, and it was a great event in a long list of events that have happened for the class of 2020. So definitely thank you to all that attended and to everyone that organized it. Really appreciate all the work that went into it. Thank you so much. And if there are no other reports, we'll move on to Superintendent's Report. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you very much, Mr. Wensky. I want to begin by with some good news, excellent news, that we have a very generous donor who wishes to remain anonymous, who is willing to contribute $10,000 to the Colonial Fund. We have an ongoing fund drive to try to help offset some of the reductions in the budget that we are experiencing for the coming school year. And couldn't be more grateful that these individuals have stepped forward to make this level of donation. Today, a communication went out looking to, we're looking and striving to have $10,000 in new contributions to match that $10,000 as a matching gift. And so we're hoping people will know that their dollars will be doubled essentially up to this $10,000 amount. We'll be bringing that to the school committee next week for a formal vote to accept the donation as it's beyond the threshold where it requires school committee vote. And again, very appreciative, and we'd ask people to consider if they're able to help us out so far. I don't have the specific number, but I believe we were over $60,000 in donations at this point. And this will push us certainly far beyond that. So we are grateful for the generosity of that anonymous donor. I also wanted Mr. Collins to provide a couple of updates relative to operations. So I'll turn it over to him for a moment.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sawyer. The first update is that the business office will be dropping in the US mail tomorrow a batch of over 800 refund checks representing refunds that the school committee voted to authorize to send back to parents for payments made for the month of March during the school closure. And at that time, the school committee thought and voted that it would be the best and most equitable thing to do would be to provide those refunds since not all the services could be provided. So we've had to break, let's break up this large volume of work into two separate batches. Tomorrow's batch will be over 1,000 refunds representing 800 checks for the Extended School Care Program, the After-School ASAP Program, and the Summer Spark Program. In about two weeks, we'll be dropping in the mail the final and second batch of refunds, which will be about 3,000 refunds for busing, full-day kindergarten tuition, and preschool tuitions. So they're not all being mailed tomorrow. It's two separate batches. And again, in two to three weeks will be the busing, full-day kindergarten and preschool. So there's no need for parents to call or inquire about these or even request these. We've automatically produced the refunds based upon the criteria set forth by the school committee. And we do appreciate the support from the town accountant's office, treasurer's office, and certainly our IT staff who helped us to work through this and some of the technical challenges that we had. And appreciate the patience of the parent community for sure. The second update is regarding school bus transportation for the upcoming school year. We have open school bus transportation under the new guidelines for the upcoming school year, which are right now, as of today, parents may register their child via the parent portal if their child lives two or more miles from their assigned school next year. And we are very confident that if the model is chosen to return to school in a hybrid fashion, which I know the school committee will hear more up-to-date report later this evening. If that is the model that is chosen going forward, then we're confident that we'd be able to open up bus registration to all students. But for now, based upon the limitations that we have for capacity on school buses, that's been acted by, enacted by the Mass Department of Public Education. We are opening up for just two or more miles, again, with the intent of relaxing that shortly for parents to allow more students to register. So parents can do that via the parent portal. And again, as you know, the school committee has waived the bus fee for the first half of the school year. So there will be no bus fee for the first half of the school year. And certainly, I'll be making recommendation via the superintendent to you for the second half of the school year based upon where we are with the pandemic. So those are the two updates, and I'll turn it back to Mr. Wensky. Great. Thank you, Mr. Collins, Dr. Sawyer. The next item on our agenda is a time schedule appointment regarding a school committee authorization for St. John's High School to add grades seven and eight. Just open to discussion and vote. Dr. Sawyer, do you want to give us some background?
Sure. Under Massachusetts state law, the local school committee is responsible for approving private school operations. And regardless of whether that private school is a secular or religious school, the local public school, school committee has that responsibility. The private schools in Shrewsbury have been longstanding, and certainly St. John's was approved to operate many, many years ago. And it's an excellent school with whom we enjoy a very strong working relationship. They are planning on offering two new grades, expanding their operation from a ninth through 12 high school to include the upper middle school grades of seventh and eighth grade. When a private school expands its operation, the local school committee needs to authorize those additional grades as well. And that's what's before the school committee this evening. I have reviewed the information that Alex Aquero, the headmaster at St. John's, provided. It's readily available on their website for the public as well. School committee has received that information, and I am confident based on my review that it will be a quality program. And essentially, under the law, school committees just need to make sure that a private school has a viable program before it authorizes it. And unlike approving an entirely new school, the fact that St. John's has a longstanding operation with an excellent reputation and excellent results, I believe that it's very easy for me to make the recommendation that the school committee vote to approve St. John's being able to add grades seven and eight so that it becomes authorized for grades seven through 12 as a private school in the town of Shrewsbury. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions the committee has.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Colleagues, any comments or questions? Dr. McGee?
I'm curious to know how they're treating the COVID pandemic as to what arrangements they're making for their students at St. John's. Do you know?
I haven't had a conversation with St. John's about what their, what their plans are at this point.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, there being none, I need a motion for the committee to authorize St. John's High School in Shrewsbury to add grades seven and eight to their existing configuration so that it may operate as a private school offering grades seven through 12. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, vote. Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Mr. Palance?
Aye.
Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Myself, aye. The motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is a discussion and vote regarding required reopening planning document submission to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Here to present is Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Wensky, and Ms. Clodder will join me in presenting in a moment. If you, I'm going to share my screen as we do have a set of slides we'd like to share with you. All right. And can you see that being shared at this point?
Yep, just need to have reduced your notes section there.
Yep, I'm going to start the slideshow. All right. So again, you know, this is incredibly important work and complicated work that the school district has been undertaking. There is all kinds of, there are all kinds of stories in the media relative to the issue of school reopening. And we're pleased to present some information to you this evening. I want to begin by again emphasizing our key messages that the health and well-being of our students, our families, and our staff is our first priority. That our focus for the coming year is to develop a safe environment as we can for our students and staff, prioritizing everyone's well-being and with a focus on enabling high levels of learning for our students. And then we're planning, of course, based on guidance from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, while also closely monitoring the latest information from medical experts as well as the evolving data regarding the pandemic, both in Massachusetts and in Shrewsbury. School committee knows, and those who are watching, that the last time you met, you heard a presentation from Dr. Timothy Gibson, pediatrician and our Shrewsbury Public Schools' school physician, along with Noel Freeman, our Director of School Nursing. The focus of that presentation, of course, given Dr. Gibson's expertise was around students and the current research regarding the safety of school. I do want to let our staff know who are watching, and I did send an email earlier today. We have set up an internal staff webinar tomorrow evening at six o'clock with a panel, including Dr. Gibson and two other doctors, one who's an infectious disease specialist relative to specific issues related to staff and health issues and safety related to COVID-19. So we look forward to having our staff participate in that tomorrow evening. We continue to monitor information. I know that Ms. Freeman and Dr. Gibson are going to be participating on a conference call tomorrow with our Central Massachusetts Health Alliance, of which Shrewsbury is a part, connected with the Worcester Department of Public Health, where local public health officials and school officials are going to be discussing health issues related to reopening. So we are paying the most attention, the best attention that we can to, of course, to the medical issues and guidance relative to health as well as the data regarding the pandemic here in Shrewsbury as well as here in the state of Massachusetts. I also want to emphasize tonight, as we begin, that it's important to note that tonight's presentation is not, in all caps, the proposed reopening plan. We will be presenting a recommended plan next week at your meeting on August 5th. But this evening is something different. Right now, you know, our staff are, continue to work hard, extremely hard. And lots of our staff are involved on four different, actually five different subcommittees. We're providing input regarding what is going to be in our school district's best interest for our students and our staff and families going forward. They're working on that plan, and we'll have more information specifically next week. Tonight is really a presentation regarding the analysis that we're required to do by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education regarding what they required us to do analysis of three potential reopening plans. One that would be bringing all students back in full with three-foot distancing, doing a hybrid model of bringing some students back or students back on an alternating schedule to reduce the number of students in the building at one time, and if you're learning remotely in the times they weren't in school. And then what a full remote learning plan might look like if that were required. And that's what we'll be discussing this evening is our analysis of those. We are required to submit by the end of the week what our preferred plan is based on our analysis so far, as far as the preferred model. And then a specific plan is required, and we'll refer to this later in the presentation, by August 10th to be approved, and we'll be presenting that to the school committee again next week on August 5th. I do want to emphasize again to everyone that this is truly an extraordinary situation. It's going to require ongoing iteration because there is constantly changing information. We continue to receive new and updated guidance very frequently from the state. And the circumstances continue to evolve. And as a result, whatever plan we put on the table next week is not going to be a perfect plan. It will be the best plan that we can provide under the circumstances. And we are going to continue to continuously work on improving whatever plan is adopted by the district. And we'll continue to respond to the circumstances as they evolve. But I just want to make sure this is certainly not a static situation. And everyone is doing their level best to use their best professional judgment regarding what's going to be in the best interest of our students, our staff, and our families. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Clodder, who will take you through the analysis that we've done of the three options that we had to vet for the state as well as what our preferred option is, and I'll have some commentary about that at the end of the presentation as well. So I'll turn it over at this point to Ms. Clodder.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. I just want to stress that although we're going to be talking about plans for teaching and learning, all of the is namely those looking at operations, health, and human resources. Our planning is predicated around what health experts and our own Noel Freeman, the Director of Nursing, is recommending is safe. And as we're planning, we're planning with hope because, as you see on your screen, the picture of our end-of-school-year teaching team, that's a picture from last year. But these dedicated educators are making what we're calling the next normal work right now with some of our most vulnerable learners. So their successes and challenges have informed our thinking about reopening scenarios and the impact of safety protocols and routines on educators and families. So we're envisioning what the fall will look like or what a new back-to-school would look like. But some of our students are already back to school and successfully engaging in, in learning with their teachers. And so I want to begin with that glimpse of hope. Next slide, please. Second thing I want to emphasize is although I'm the one sharing tonight, our reopening plans are informed by many people. Dr. Sawyer mentioned that the reopening committee has several working groups. So there's the area of operations and technology, special education, student services and health, human resources, and staff well-being. And I'm sharing findings from the curriculum side of things. We looked at curriculum instruction and assessment factors in making some decisions about our planning. But on each team, our reopening plans include teacher voices because in Shrewsbury, teacher voices and decision-making is a core value. It's also one of the keys to our success. And as you all know, in the spring, input from our educators and the things we learned by engaging in remote learning and teaching together helped make our plans better week by week. And I'm sure that that will be the case again, no matter the model we proceed with. We have educator representatives on reopening committees at every level. And in all, we have 19 educators serving on the curriculum side so far. And I'm sure that that will grow in the next week as we look at more specific and detailed plans and schedules. I just want to take a minute and thank every teacher serving on this critical task force for their time. And just as importantly, I want to acknowledge the hard work of principals Tiffany Ostrander, Anne Jones, and Todd Buzidlow, as well as our curriculum coaches, coordinators, and the directors who continue to be key contributors in this ongoing planning process. And I just want to stress the word "ongoing." My task is to share our initial thinking in anticipation of the requirement by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that every public school submit a preliminary plan by Friday. But that's a preliminary plan, and we have lots of work ahead to take that plan and shape it. The detailed plans will be informed by educator feedback as well as input from families. Next slide, please. So this timeline shows what our planning processes looks like so far. Our first task was really to come up with what DESE calls a preliminary plan. And to do that, we had to engage in a prolonged feasibility study. In our study, district teams looked at all areas from how we would, you know, use the capacity of our physical plants to what we would need from a technological perspective as we expanded our one-to-one program, to how we would support students with diverse needs, how we would take care of our staff and their well-being, as well as how we would monitor students and their mental health as they returned to school. And then we thought a little bit about the curriculum aspects and what we learned about them, the power of learning during the remote model and how that might translate. So given what we've learned about the changing nature of the virus, it's clear that we might have to switch from one model to another. And so the requirement from the DESE to come up with a plan was designed for us to be nimble if we had to make that switch. So once we got the initial guidance that said we would need to think about more than one plan. So in addition to thinking about how we might revise remote learning, we had to consider other alternatives. Then we began to think about the committee work and how we would structure each of those working groups so that we would get teacher voices and and be able to share with a, with a smaller group than the whole community, some of the details that were coming in terms of the guidance. And then after we submit this final plan, we have another more detailed plan due on August 10th, which means that we will be talking next week again at school committee about some of the more thorough aspects of the, of the plan that are still under development. So here are the three questions that all districts have to answer. And knowing that we have to switch from one model to another, if the pandemic makes it unsafe for people to be in school, we have to think about now how we might, how we might prepare for that switch. So we have to think about, since safety is key, what are the findings of the physical plan that come into play in terms of how we would structure scheduling and time on learning? And so this initial plan is what we're going to be sharing this evening. So we have to think about first, could we bring kids back into school with new safety requirements in place? If we couldn't bring everybody back, what would a hybrid of in-person and remote learning look like? So that, how would it look if we could bring them back some of the time? Or some of the kids all of the time? And then finally, what did we learn about remote learning in the spring that would change the way that we're going to approach remote learning in the fall? And that also needs to take into account some guidelines from the DESE because they've also changed their expectations about the robustness of remote learning. And one important thing to note is that in every model, we really need to think about how we're going to work to develop a focus plan for special student populations who are at higher risk and/or who were not as connected as most students were during the closure. So first, we looked at the feasibility of what the recommendations from the DESE were around social distancing. And you can see on the left, this is what a classroom looks like with a distance of three feet between desks. And that area in the front is where teachers might be. And that kidney table that you see there shows kind of how you would organize for guided reading or something like that, assuming there's a plexiglass barrier that's available between the students and/or the teacher. When we looked at that model, it made people uncomfortable. It looked a lot like a parochial school in the 60s and not really what the the movement and the liveliness of a classroom in Shrewsbury looks like. The six-foot model is what's pictured on the right, and that seemed to be the right fit for us. If we were going to bring kids back, that seemed like a distance that would most match our vision of teaching and learning. So once we determined that six feet is the preferred spacing for social distancing in school, it's clear that we couldn't safely bring all students back at once. And it's clear from the survey of families that was shared with you last week that families had some reservations about the three-foot distancing too. So if we're going to assume that we're going to have a six-foot model for any in-person learning that's happening, we need to think about how we would divide enrollment so that we could fit safely a smaller number of kids in our classrooms. And we also had to consider some of the capacities of our common spaces like hallways and cafeterias and buses. If we're busing students to school, we have to make sure that we're thinking about the busing and those, the spaces on those buses too. So this leaves us to consider, since in-person learning with new safety requirements for everybody is impossible, what a hybrid model and/or what remote model would look like in Shrewsbury. Next slide, please. Okay, so since remote learning is most familiar, I thought that we would talk a little bit about how we would improve remote learning should we need to revert back to that model. And in our surveys from last spring, it was clear that both educators and families want more live time with students. They felt that most interactions happened when people could be face-to-face even through Zoom. And so remote learning guidelines would be adjusted to reflect much more time on learning if we had to revert to that model again. Secondly, we started off with kind of ambiguous expectations about Zoom. I had to remember myself that despite all of the prompts to put our mute buttons off as we're talking, we haven't had Zoom a whole lot. That was something that we got midway through our experience of remote learning, and now it feels like second nature to most teachers. But we need to raise expectations for student participation. So attendance would be taken and student responsibilities would be communicated proactively before we resumed any model of remote learning. Also, student work would be collected and assignments would be graded. So we had an incomplete-complete or a pass-fail system before. We would revert back to the grading systems that were in place before closure to really make sure that students felt a sense of accountability and responsibility for their work. And finally, as you know, and thank you, we have some software tools to help differentiate learning that could complement some of the instructional plans that we put together in any model. So the next model to really think about is what a hybrid model would look like in Shrewsbury. And our thinking is driven here by the fact that a safe return to in-person learning, and I emphasize that word "safe", is better educationally than a continuation of remote learning, assuming that it's possible. So if it's possible, it's preferred for us. An alternate, alternating in-person and remote plan will allow educators to connect with and effectively engage students. And we know that when teachers can engage with students, it makes a difference in their motivation. Also makes a difference in our ability to support a wider range of needs. And finally, skillful teaching is informed by assessment, and we've been really missing assessment data with kids. Collecting data about student performance is best done in person. It makes it a little bit more reliable. And our education plans will be better and stronger in terms of how they're able to meet the needs of that range of students if we can have information about where their performance is. So one of the reasons we're calling a hybrid model in Shrewsbury, alternating in-person and remote, is because, given the new state requirements, we have really several cohorts of kids. And in meeting the needs of these kids in every cohort, we will be essentially running a hybrid model no matter what. Because we have kids in Cohort A who are high-need students that would need to attend every day. So we're going to call them Cohort A because they're the all-attending. Cohorts B and C would be students that would alternate days. So they'd have days of remote learning and days of learning remote, days of in-person learning, sorry, and days of remote learning at home. And they would be split equally alphabetically. And again, thanks to Eric Bauer and Brian LaRue and Pat for helping to think about the numbers of kids, would that be 50/50 if we split them that way? And the goal of splitting kids alphabetically is to make sure that siblings across levels would have the same schedules to make it easy for families. And then the DESE has also said that families can opt for kids who are immunocompromised or for whom they have concerns. And then the DESE has also said that families can opt for kids who are immunocompromised or for whom they have concerns. To continue with remote learning. And so, districts have to provide for those students too. So, once you think about the fact that we have really four groups of students to be mindful of. You understand that we're going to have some students in school all the time. And we may have some students that are not in school all the time, they're attending remotely. And so, that's what I mean by we'll be running a hybrid model no matter what. But the kind of model we have for most students is what we had to make a recommendation about for Friday. So, a hybrid model also means that we'll have to adjust the academic day. And that's because if we were in-person, we'd have to allow for the time that it takes to enforce safety measures. So, for example, we've decided that we'd probably have to double the arrival time. If we're keeping good social distancing. And we'd have to adjust the academic day on remote days to raise expectations for student work in the ways that I described. When talking about remote learning two point oh. And finally, it will mean building time for planning as well as teaching and learning. And I say that because the strength of our remote plans was driven by our ability to give teacher teams time to collaborate. And we'll have to think about where does collaboration fit in this new model. Next slide, please. So this is an example of what an alternating in-person model might look like. So you can see at the very top, Cohort A, high-need students would be in-person every day. In a hybrid model, Cohort B would attend on Monday and Tuesday. They'd be remote on Wednesday, they'd be in-person, I'm sorry, they'd be. Remote on Thursday and Friday. Cohort C would be that alternating cohort, they start the week remotely on Monday and Tuesday. It'd be remote on Wednesday and then they would be in-person on Thursday and Friday. And Cohort D, as you can see, would be remote all the time because that would be what their families were opting for. So when we look at the key data points from the parent survey. Their support for an alternating hybrid schedule if there's fewer students. And so that's one of the things that informs our preference for that model. As well as knowing that there's no substitute for the attention and engagement that follow in-person learning. So once we decided we could bring half our students back, we started thinking about. How we would draft schedules and I just shared an example. But I want to stress that this is a preliminary recommendation and it's subject to change based on. That, you know, what families actually tell us that they're going to do when they have more detailed plans. And what input from educators has to do with driving our planning. And also, how we fit that collaboration time in. Might flex the schedule and we spent a lot of time thinking about where is the ideal time for that to happen? And whether it's better to chunk days so that families and teachers would have. Times with cohorts that were condensed or whether it would better to spread those out more in a given week. We landed on thinking that it was best to see kids. All kids in both cohorts every week rather than having, for example, a model where. Cohort B was home for a week and then remote the following week. We just felt that the survey results from from teachers and from parents. Talked about wanting to have more frequent check-ins, both for education reasons and for health reasons. And so, although this is our recommendation, kind of. You'll notice in that model that there wasn't hours or times in the day. There's lots of details that have yet to be worked out that are going to be worked out with educator input. So, you can see here in terms of, we didn't necessarily give. All of the options that we're considering internally on this initial survey. But you can see that parents don't have a strong preference either way at this point because they want to know more about. What does that look like on a day-to-day basis? And I certainly understand that. So, although we're sharing our preliminary recommendation that having kids back in school for some time. Which would be an alternating in-person and remote schedule is our preference. We haven't yet decided kind of on a, landed on a specific schedule. And we'll need to do that in order to get data back from parents about how they'll send kids. And then we'd have to think again about, does that mean our cohorts are truly balanced? So, we have to decide, we had to prevent, I'm sorry. We had to present to the DESE an analysis of all three options. So even though we've felt that we cannot bring everybody safely back in person simultaneously. At a distance of three feet, we had to kind of say that formally in this preliminary plan. We had to talk about if we had to recommend a hybrid model, what would work? And so the the schedule that we. Posted it as an example is the one right now that is under consideration. And then thinking about the final plan, we'll need to kind of talk about that and and do more detailed work. So, that more detailed plan is coming next week. And in the meantime, reopening task force subcommittees are working to kind of resolve some of those details. So that we can make a better recommendation with many more nuanced kind of findings attached for your consideration. I want to make sure that we mentioned that. Every plan that we continue, that we might present poses some barriers. Barriers for families and barriers for staff and barriers for students. So when we think about remote learning, it might in one way feel safer. But it also poses difficulty for students who don't have people who can watch them at home. And so in some ways, that's not safer. We know it poses difficulties for working parents, including staff that are working parents. Especially when their children are in school in other districts. We know that it was, remote learning poses equity issues for kids who don't have the supports they need at home. Who have the technology but maybe not the know-how to use it. And hybrid models make access easier but also pose challenges. Because as we are as a district coming up with a schedule, so too are other districts. And some of them align better than others. So working through these challenges with all stakeholders will be critical. And our goal is really to choose a model that best matches our needs. And to do that, we have to carefully consider the pros and cons of various schedules. So, these three options are due this this Friday, this initial analysis. And and I want, I just want to make sure people know that. There'll be lots of time to hear thoughts both on our planning committee but also our. Our HR committee has created kind of an ongoing bank. And so if you're watching and you have some feedback and you want to share that, especially if you're a staff member. All of the committees are paying close attention to the feedback that's coming through that feed. And that's a really good place to share your, your thoughts about some of the things that you've heard tonight. Especially if you're not comfortable speaking up in person to a member on the committee directly. Next slide, please. So, as part of this work. We will need to have some training for staff. We know that training was key to having the end-of-school-year experience work well. And so, new information from the department suggests that we're going to delay the start of school. By ten days to enable some thorough training and orientation. I think that will help people to kind of understand some of the nuances of the model. And to frankly, practice kind of a next normal in the buildings while they're be working. And, you know, having been in the buildings and and seen some of the signage and the distancing. I think that it helps to to envision kind of how this might actual work with with students. But it will be key to have time to practice just as adults. And then to think about what are the things that can be in place to help students envision school in a different way? Because we know that that will be a significant transition for them too. So an updated school calendar will be brought forward to the school committee as part of the reopening plan next week. And specific family choices for students for participating in the hybrid model or the fully remote model. Will be requested through the Power School Parent Portal and that's so that we can track which specific families are opting for different choices. In the meantime, there's an email address here that you can send questions to and feedback to so that we can. Hear from the community directly about what people are wondering. And again, when school closed last spring, the world came to understand. The value of schools and the importance of teachers that make schooling experiences so special. And I don't see, think I can say thanks enough for that. I have the utmost respect for our educators. Once again, they're modeling what it means to be lifelong learners as we grapple with this next normal. And I'm deeply grateful for the enthusiasm and the spirit of collaboration all our staff bring to their work. Their collective efforts will continue to make our plans, no matter what they are, really strong and our schools even stronger. And that's my presentation for this evening.
Okay, so thank you. I'm going to stop sharing my screen here. Let me just add before we open up for questions from the committee. The committee has the reopening plan analysis document that we are obligated to submit to the State Department of Education by this Friday. I appreciate Ms. Clutters being the lead author of that, pulling together the various elements of that the different teams are working on. Meg Belcito, our Assistant Superintendent for Student Services and her teams contributed. Particularly to the portion at the end about how we're going to make sure we're supporting students. Who have high needs, whether that's special education, English language learners. Students who for a variety of reasons might be struggling in terms of how we would support them under any of the three scenarios. And I just want to emphasize again that it's in the opening part of the of the document. That we're really focused on our own core values as a school district. And of course, the top priority being the health and safety and well-being of all of our students and all of our staff. And of course, translating into supporting our families as well. So with that, I'm happy to take questions from the committee. In advance of asking you to vote to approve the submission of this initial, this analysis of three plans. In combination with the recommendation that our preferred plan would be the hybrid alternating schedule model. Which essentially because of the inability with just the number of students in our schools. Particularly schools like our high school, we have almost 2,000 students in the school that was designed for about fourteen hundred students, seventeen, fourteen, seventy-five, I believe. You can understand that some of the three-foot pieces just were not tenable. But we believe the six-foot piece works better for a variety of reasons. And will provide us with an opportunity to do a combination of in-person and remote learning. That we believe can be robust. So with that, any questions or comments the committee has?
Thank you, Dr. Swer, Ms. Clutter for the presentation. Colleagues, questions and comments? Ms. Heffernan?
Ms. Ms. Clutter, thank you very much. I know how much effort has gone into this and I know that. You are sort of standing on just moving ground, right, in terms of guidance that we're getting and understanding what's what's required of us and. And what is safe and best both for our young people but also particularly our our staff. So, I have a couple of questions there in a sort of a scattered shot if you if you don't mind. I have heard a fair bit from some other people in my house in terms of Zoom etiquette that cameras off are very common. And so, that in one point, I think in a language class, there were almost a hundred young people in the remote plan, you know, we'll call it one point oh. And most of the cameras are off and it's just, you know, really hard to keep kids engaged. I wonder if when you think about what that Zoom etiquette looks like, if that's part of the guidance you're you're talking about that we really want kids as much as possible to be kind of actually. I understand we can't say always cameras on, we are in people's homes, but what you're what you're thinking about how we how we message that?
You know, we talked about this as a leadership team today because initially our thinking was having the camera on was a real signal of engagement. And then we reflected around how for some kids, having the camera on is really difficult, just as for working parents, right? You might want to engage in a conversation but you might know that there's a busy background and that might be distracting for people watching. Or you might need to eat your lunch, you don't necessarily want everybody to see that. And so as adults, when we turn our cameras off. We give each other some grace around what that means. And I think what we want for kids is really robust engagement and participation. So, if we, you know, give kids a little bit of that grace and say, if for some reason you can't have your camera on today. Our default would be that we expect you to see, to to be engaged, right? But we have, we have some kids that are going to face the same barriers that we face. But if for some reason you can't have that camera on, here's this other way I can know that you're tuning in. And I think it just requires more in-depth kind of instructional planning. So, follow along and email me the notes you've made as we've talked today. We're going to go into a breakout group and if your camera isn't on, I definitely want to know you, I've heard your voice and here's how I'm going to find out. I I think we have to be kind of ingenious and you know, teachers are innovative and ingenious. So I think if we consider that, you know. We do want participation, we do want engagement. So how can we assess that? And sometimes it is the camera, but it doesn't always have to be the camera if for some reason circumstances in a child's home would make that really difficult.
Yeah, you but you bring up a good point. I was on a webinar recently where. In order to sort of check for engagement, there was a poll in the middle, right? Everyone answered the question and so other ways. So I'm glad you're you're thinking about it and I appreciate that's part of our our thinking. I wonder if you may have said it and if I I might have missed it, but. For parents who are trying to sort of do the math a little bit and understand how big these different cohorts might be. The size of Cohort A of kids going, who kids for whom we would be offering. An everyday option. What, you mentioned a couple of kids that fall into that, but how how big do we estimate? Recognizing this is an estimate because parents could always choose option D. But how many would that be available to roughly in terms of our student body?
So, I hate moments like this because I have to tell you, I don't know the answer to that. What I do know is who would be kind of meeting the criteria. So, under the high-needs umbrella, we'd have kids that were at risk or kind of very intermittently or not engaged during the spring. So kids that received the equivalent of kind of a incomplete or a failing grade. Kids who are considered by DESI to be economically disadvantaged, which is. You know, one category of high risk. Kids who are English learners, not necessarily all English learners, but kids who were English learners who are also academically at risk. We have to kind of do a more thorough analysis to kind of figure out. Who in that group would be coming back and then of course, students with special needs that were considered. You know, the same criteria that we might use, for example, for summer programming. May might apply. And again, that's not my area of expertise, I would defer to Mrs. Belcito on that. But I think I, what I want to convey is that there would both be. A criteria underneath kind of the umbrella of regular education and also criteria under the umbrella of special education. And we have to really do a careful analysis before I could tell you the percentage. I really wouldn't want to get that wrong, but it's a small, it's a small percentage.
Okay, I think that'd be an important piece for us for next week. As you said, this is not a vote on our plan, this is a vote on a report to submit to the state of what what things would look like. But that would be a helpful, helpful data point. The, two last things, I'm sorry to my my colleagues, but. The guidance from the state around masks and masks in school, if I understand, was second grade and above. Have you given consideration to what we're thinking about for our younger students? And I'm particularly thinking about our workforce that works with our younger students. And recognizing that children in masks, that's not easy, but I wonder what the thinking is there?
I have to give credit to Noel Freeman because I've actually asked her that question myself. And I I think, you know, for some children, there are some kids with conditions that would preclude them from wearing masks. But although the DESE is not recommending that kids below grade two have to wear them, we are going to recommend that they do. It's our, it's our preference if at all possible to do that.
I I'm in support of that, just but.
But that's not, I want to make sure that people know that that's not my job to make that recommendation, I am not a medical expert, that's Noel Freeman. And if if she feels that that's a reasonable expectation, then I I think that that would certainly be a prudent thing to do.
Sure. And one last, one last question and then I will see the see the floor. Thank you to everybody. I really appreciate your comment that we haven't had an opportunity to really assess our kids and assess where they're at on an individual level. And I know that as a parent with a, you know, a budding reader. I want the reading assessment from the teacher, that's what tells me, am I moving up my letters, right? And and but those things also take a lot of time for teachers. And really are obviously done on a one-on-one basis and do the reading and the comprehension and all of that back and forth. And I'm just trying to get your. And I'm just trying to get your your sense of what you're thinking. How do we do that? How do we ask our teachers to both be in the classroom with, let's call it a little under half of the students, do a good job there? Also know you have half of your students that are trying to do work and maybe emailing you and, you know, they're they're at home and and. And give a one on one instruction because we need one on one assessment, but we know we desperately need it across all sorts of content areas. So what is the thinking about how to how to make that juggle work?
It it's a balancing act. I mean, teachers will tell you that just running guided reading groups and thinking about how to group kids so that they get enough face time with teachers is a challenge. And I credit teachers every year for figuring that out and they will figure it out again. Some of the things we've considered are, you know, we have a proportion of kids that have been engaging with software that might give us some sense of where their reading levels are. We have some kids who could potentially take a paper version of some of our assessments. And then preserve the face time to do kind of the definite reading recording or kind of miscue analysis. Our coaches are thinking about, you know, how do we create kind of a hybrid model of assessment? Where we can do some of the independent work or like an analysis of text. Kind of as almost like as a homework model, but some of the listening to kids reading and the fluency analysis in person. So I know that there are people smarter than me working on that right now as part of our task force. And that's a key driver of our planning because we know that good teaching is centered around an assessment of student understanding.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments? Dr. McGee?
So we've repeatedly emphasized the fact that the health and safety of our staff and our students are paramount. What constitutes accept acceptable safety in a time of uncertainty is going to vary by the interpretation of the individual who's affected. And we polled parents regarding this, seeing that roughly half would be willing to send their children back to school. Given the information that was available a few weeks ago at three feet distance and and that increases, I I believe to about two thirds. If we're looking at a three foot distance. My sense is as time passes, our comfort with in person schooling is going to increase as we get more information available. And yet the number of people who are fully in person is going to be very, very small and most are going to be in the hybrid model. The equation for parents is going to be a combination of. How safe they feel the the environment is and also their own personal circumstances. And so my concern has to do with those parents who can't afford to have one person staying at home with their child. During the remote learning portion. And whether there there's a way for us to work in some of that consideration as well. Since the the option of either one person staying home from work. Or contracting with a daycare provider that may provide an environment that is. You know, no less, no less safe than than the school. You know, I'm I'm wondering about that that component and whether we could work that into our equation. Because I sense there may be some pushback from parents who look at the hybrid and say, what am I going to do?
Yep, I I think you make a really good point. Again, I think our planning will be influenced by kind of this chicken and egg, right? Families want to know before they opt into a plan what the details of the plan are. And then depending on what families elect for what plans, then we know better our capacity. But I think that your point is really well taken.
Mrs. Fritz. Oh, you're on mute. Mute.
Doing that. I just want to say I I agree with Dale. I think the first thing that we need to look at is safety for students and staff. But we also need to be very mindful of families and decisions that they're going to make for their children. Safety, but there's also, you know, with working parents. So I hope that we can have as much consistency as possible, even with a hybrid plan. That, you know, it might be a two day, you know, block so that working families have some ability maybe. To work with their employer to figure out the best way for their family and their children to get the best education they can. We do want to see some, you know, increase in rigor as we move into this, you know, 2.0 form of education. This is something we haven't done before, but I really think we have to. Safety first, but we have to look at consistency because there's so many variables that families are going to have to consider as they make these decisions. And I also really want to thank you, Ms. Clutter, Dr. Sawyer and all administrators and everyone's staff who've been working on these plans. We've never done this. We're learning as we go. We have to be adaptive. And I think, you know, as we move into whatever the vote will be eventually, there's going to be some changes as we move along because things are going to change in the environment and so forth. But thank you. This is a tremendous amount of work in a very short amount of time.
Dr. Sawyer, you have a comment? Oh. Okay, Mr. Valich, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And if I might, I have a question first and then some comments. My question to Dr. Sawyer and to Ms. Clutter, and thank you for your work on this. And for the benefit of folks watching, especially families and staff members, to the extent feasible, I'm wondering if you can just walk through the timeline on this. And I again, I appreciate that there are some details that are still up in the air, but in terms of not only going forward, just reminding, you know, when the final plan is is going to come before school committee. When we expect we might be starting to reach out to parents through the parent portal to get their preferences. But also there has been some press coverage in the last 48 hours regarding a 10 day arrangement that the Commonwealth negotiated. And I know that there's been some community confusion about that. So I'm wondering to the extent feasible, if you might just walk through the timeline between now and school resuming.
Sure, I can I can take that. When we present the, we'll be presenting a plan to the school committee a week from this evening. That will have as much detail as we possibly can include at that point in time. And as I mentioned, certainly there will continue to be some things that evolve. But we'll provide the most detailed option for you and we'll be, you know, we're planning on presenting a plan to move into this hybrid schedule. In terms of the. The timing of the start of the, excuse me, in terms of then asking parents for what their preference will be. I think we need to give them a little time to digest the plan, of course, but I would expect pretty quickly thereafter. Perhaps as soon as the beginning of the following week, we'll be asking people to give us specific information about their choice for their child. We'll obviously give them sufficient time to make that choice, but it'll have to be done, you know, soon enough that we can use that for planning. Because the big wild card here is how many families are going to opt for the fully remote learning, essentially opting out. Of the alternating in person and remote. I want to to stress again, and it was in one of the bullet points. That as of right now, our preliminary thinking around that is that if families, a student who's in a full remote learning program. Is going to be, is not going to be learning with one of the other cohorts. They're going to be learning fully remotely within some sort of virtual academy. That could be a combination of some number of Shrewsbury educators. It is quite likely going to be include some level of a third party product. There are different online education products that different school districts have been exploring, including us. And and frankly, one of the pieces of information that we're waiting on. And we're and we're, I was told to on a conference call today for superintendents that they're hoping in the next few days. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Department of Education. Has had done a request for proposals and is going to be providing an option where they're procuring essentially some third party online platform. You know, remote learning solutions that school districts would be able to essentially purchase. Hopefully for lower cost because of the scale, the economy of scale the state would get through their RFP. Until we know that information, it's hard for us to say exactly what that's going to look like. And again, we're hoping we'll have some details before next Wednesday. But what what we can say based on our planning, what is not a reasonable situation is to ask. An educator, one of our educators to be planning instruction for the cohort of students would be physically with them on certain days. And also for the cohort of students that is, you know, remote at the same time and alternating with them. And then on top of that, try to plan for a group of students who are never coming in for in person instruction. That that's just not a tenable situation for our for our educators. So, you know, whether we'll have some Shrewsbury educators who will be, you know, helping to coordinate that or doing some of that work. That is, those are some of the details we're trying to work out, but we are waiting on some information from the state regarding what some of those options might be. And we have to look obviously at the economic feasibility of those pieces as well. As far as the start of the school year, this is very new information. It has certainly been in the news. That the Commissioner of Education, Commissioner Riley negotiated with the state level teachers unions in Massachusetts. Regarding something that has been, I think, floated by different organizations as a. A positive way to be able to provide more opportunities for planning and training. We've certainly been planning like furiously since the springtime. But in before students enter and the way the school districts work, of course, is that. Teachers are contracted to work a certain amount of days every year when they return to work. Having more opportunities for them for training, the potential for some student orientation, you know, with physical distancing. With maybe smaller groups or cohorts of students. Variety of things that could take place in the state's negotiation was to provide 10 more days. So what the commissioner has issued is that districts are, and he said on the conference call today, essentially districts are expected. To take 10 additional days for that kind of training and orientation. But that they did need to start the school year no later than, I believe the date was September 16. That would put us pretty much at a 10 day mark from, you know, August 31st is the Monday prior to Labor Day. Which is the when our our current calendar would have had the first day for staff. We had scheduled on September 1st, a professional development day for staff because that is also election day for the primary. And then the first day of students would have been Wednesday, September 2nd. So based on what's happened, I do believe that we'll be pushing back the physical start of school for students to later in September. And if it's 10 days, I believe it would probably be Tuesday, that I believe is the 16th. But we are going to formalize our recommendation around the calendar. We'll provide that to the school committee next week. We're obviously going to be consulting with our teachers association on that, as is our responsibility. And and other staff and our paraprofessionals organization and so forth. So that's part of the very intense work that's going to be happening between now and next Wednesday evening. But we'll be able to give some specifics on that. So I ask people for people's patience, but I do think based on what the state has has the edict they've put out. That we can plan on school starting approximately 10 working days later than otherwise would have.
Okay.
Yep, thank you. And thank you for that, Dr. Sawyer. And just some comments as I read through the analysis that we've been presented with this evening. And as I reflected on that, listened to the discussion, heard some of the questions being answered. I do feel that what we have in front of us so far represents the best possible thinking on approaching this very complicated situation. I know that I've heard a lot from parents and families and staff members, there is a lot of fear, there's a lot of concern, there's irritation. Over a constantly changing landscape, and I think that that's something that we all share. Those feelings seen, heard, and they're all fully valid. We are not, as Dr. Sawyer and Ms. Clutter alluded to, we're not going to assuage or relay all of those concerns. But I think that the thinking that we are being presented with tonight represents the best possible approach. To deal with what are inherently competing needs. I've been a bit disappointed to see some conversation around the topic of school reopening devolve into a question of moral absolutes. Which I do not think is an accurate reflection of what's in front of us. Some have presented this as an absolute moral quandary between right and wrong. Some have even taken what I consider to be a poisonous national political dialogue and brought it to bear on this conversation. The reality is this school district, like all school districts, has to meet many diverse needs, some of which do not sit well with one another. We do have students who are going to need to be at home for a medical reason. Or because there is someone, a loved one in their home who might be medically compromised. Or where families feel that for their own personal reasons, they simply can't have kids back in the classroom. We do have kids who are going to need to be back in the classroom. Dr. McGee talked earlier about the situation that many parents are going to be in where it may be difficult for them to find childcare. It's been alluded to several times and some families have difficulty accessing technology. And unpleasant and as it is to think about, some kids have home situations that are not safe or stable. And in addition to those kids being at home, not being great, even though that might not be a huge number of families. We also know that being in school is frequently where those situations get noticed and addressed. So there are kids who need to be at home, there are kids who need to be at school. And it is incumbent upon this district to try to meet all of those needs. I think that this approach represents so far the best possible way to do that. There are many questions that still have to be answered, as has been referred to, referenced several times tonight. There are many details, many logistics that still have to be worked out. But what folks are watching right now is the consequence of our entire nation not having a coherent strategy to address a severe public health crisis. That has come crashing down on local public school districts. You're watching K through 12 education being reinvented right in front of your eyes, which on the one hand is tremendously impressive. Some of the work that our staff is doing, it's also tremendously alarming. Because it's not something we decided to do because it's in the best interest of kids to reinvent K through 12 education. It's something we're being forced to do very quickly. Against the backdrop of that, I've been continuously impressed by the work of our staff. Again, with the understanding that there are many questions still to be answered, many details still to be worked out. I am seeing in what has been presented to us tonight. The first outline of a coherent way forward, and I think so far it represents the best thinking on the subject. So I do support moving in the direction that that has been recommended this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palich, Dr. Sawyer.
I'll just include after, but if there's more questions, let's say more committing questions.
Ms. Heffernan?
One thing I'm thinking for next week and what what I think parents and and staff are probably curious about. But I'll speak for the parent community because that's the one I best most represent. Is how we weave together our presentation from last week by our Director of Nursing Noel Freeman and Dr. Gibson, our school physician. And this week and in terms of what we're thinking for planning, particularly as we think, okay, we we got a model, it can make some sense. Now what happens if someone is sick and how does that work and what does it mean for the cohorts? And during the time that you're sick, can you access remote learning during the time that if someone's sick? Who's going to, who's going to go out and what about teachers who have to go out because a kid in their class is sick? And how are we going to backfill and how how do we help there? Because that level, I think if we can demonstrate that we are thinking about how these two things work in tandem. We end up with more parents feeling comfortable sending their kids. Because we thought through those contingencies and not opting for option D, which while we we both need to offer it because of kids who have medical needs. And and because the state has told us to, we would like to see our kids. And so as much as is possible for next week to have some of that laid out about what what we're thinking. And I know it's evolving and I know you're working on it, but to me, when I speak with parents, it's one of the questions I'm getting both. What's the model? And then what happens when the kid who was, yes, is six feet away, but that kid is sick? And I don't know if they really stayed six feet away, what 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 will happen with my child? So as a prelude for what what you come to next week, that would be really helpful.
Thanks for that feedback.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Just to actually, if you from my perspective, as I'm sitting here moderating, I'm losing my my own place. But just I I would like to thank Dr. Sawyer, Ms. Clutter for the presentation and everybody involved really for. You know, the careful, the detailed planning required for this stage of our back to school plan. There continue to be many moving parts. And really, as we've said many times throughout the last several months and certainly on this on this meeting tonight. The health and safety of of our students and staff are really priority number one and something I think about every day. I've got an incoming freshman into the high school. And I, you know, I I, you know, certainly share the anxieties of many that I've talked to in town with regards to the messaging nationally about opening our schools. You know, so I certainly understand the level of anxiety that's out there. My own perspective is that, you know, I've been certainly in in tune with what's been happening within our own state and and watching how things are being managed through the pandemic. And I think if I lived in a different state, I might have a different opinion, but I do support the recommendation here for the hybrid model. So I do thank everybody involved for getting us to this point. And I think it's also important to note, to reiterate again to those that may have joined us late. That tonight is is not the actual detailed reopening plan. It is a result of the deadline that we have for the Massachusetts Department of Education to submit Shrewsbury's analysis and recommendation. By July 31st for our reopening plan. So with that, Dr. Sawyer, any? So with that, Dr. Sawyer, any final comments?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Winsky. Thank you to the school committee for your questions and your comments. I do appreciate, thank you to Ms. Clutter. Thank you to all the administrators, staff members, educators who've been working on the reopening task force and subcommittees. This is very complex work under, you know, shifting sands underneath our feet constantly. I do want to mention a couple of things. First off, I think it's important for the community to know and those watching, and forgive me if I mentioned at the opening of the meeting, but that next week's meeting on August 5th will be an in-person meeting of the school committee. We've received permission from the town manager and town government to, again, be able to utilize the town hall and provide live television feeds so we can have a live meeting that people, members of the public will not be able to participate. They can still participate remotely in public participation, as they have been, had that access over the last several meetings. But the school committee and the administrators will be there in person, which I think will be a welcome opportunity, even if we are wearing masks. Similarly, today, our leadership team, today is our annual, one of our annual days for our summer leadership conference. We were able to meet in person at Sherwood Middle School in the band room with distancing, but also wearing masks. We felt it was important to get the same situation that our educators will have when they're back in person in the fall. And it was a different kind of experience, because it just, it takes some adaptation. Some things you'd normally be doing are in small groups or whatnot. But we're able to, we were able to adapt and, you know, with the nice weather today, get outside and be able to have some conversations as well, again, with distancing. But these things are going to feel different. I think it's really critical to recognize that there is a high degree of fear and anxiety that many of our staff members have, parents. Everyone has some fear and anxiety to some extent. Some of that is because certainly there is the worry that someone who was a loved one or oneself becomes ill. Obviously, this is a very serious public health situation. It's also causes fear and anxiety, because we don't know exactly what this is going to look like. We'll hopefully be able to abate that some additionally next week. Hopefully, the information tonight will help a little bit with that. But until we have more certainty around what things would look like, obviously, it's natural to have fear and anxiety when you're not sure exactly what's going to happen or how things are going to be addressed. And I believe, as was mentioned earlier in the comments, we're in an environment where we're being bombarded daily, whether that's through the media, whether that's through social media, with so many different news stories with different spins on this whole issue. And I believe that, you know, there's a level of uncertainty, obviously, that pervades this nationally. There are different situations in different states, depending on how the virus is evolving there. And there is continuously evolving things coming out of the medical community, which is a good thing, that we have new studies that are coming out that are shaping our understanding of the virus and how it spreads. And that's why it's critical that we pay close, close attention to how that's all moving forward and listening to the experts and listening to the science. As educators and as educational institution, it's certainly our responsibility to look most carefully at what the evidence is saying, the best evidence we have at the time, in that we don't let, you know, our feelings overwhelm the ability to analyze what the evidence is telling us. But at the same time, understanding and being empathetic for why people do have those feelings. So I think it's incumbent upon us to do the very best we can to prevent, to present the best plan we can next week. We look forward to doing that. I appreciate the support of the committee. I appreciate the ongoing support and feedback and questions we're receiving from our staff, as well as our parent community, through the email address and through the staff Google form that we have out there. And the planning is being very thoroughly informed by that information. So with that, I would ask this evening that the school committee approve us being able to submit this to the state. And we look forward to bringing you more detailed information next week.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Any additional questions or comments before we vote? Okay, there being none, I need a motion for the school committee to authorize submission of the state-mandated reopening plan document containing an analysis of options for school reopening and including the district's preferred option of a hybrid in-person and remote learning model on an alternating schedule to the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, vote. Ms. Heffernan.
Aye.
Dr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Palance.
Aye.
Mrs. Fritz.
Aye.
Myself, aye. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. The minutes from the school committee meeting held on July 22nd, 2020 have been included in your packet for review. Any revisions or edits? There being none, they will be approved.
Just one moment. I just want to make sure of something. Give me one moment. Sorry for the delay. I just want to double-check the packet. Is it, and maybe it started coming up on my computer screen. I just want to double-check that those minutes are included.
Okay.
I didn't see them.
Could we perhaps hold?
Yeah, I think that we needed a little more time for those last week. So I think that we'll make sure we get them, week over week, we have to turn these around very quickly. So we'll have them for you for the next meeting.
Fair enough. Okay, so we'll move on to the next item, which we do need to adjourn into executive session. So I need a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements, Purpose 7, Open Meeting Law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22FG, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. And B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares Purpose 3, the Shrewsbury Education Association, Unit A; Shrewsbury Education Association, Unit B; the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association; and/or the Shrewsbury Cafeteria Workers. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay.
Moved and seconded. I need a roll call vote. Ms. Heffernan.
Aye.
Dr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Palance.
Aye.
Mrs. Fritz.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you and good night.